All right, we have returned to open session of the combined school committee meeting of June 21st, 2017.
So, as discussed and approved in executive session, I move for the region that we approve the amended Superintendent Northborough-Southborough Public Schools District Contract of Employment, with major feature includes a 3.2 percent cost of living allowance in year one, as well as the other adjustments to the contract as noted inside the executive session meeting.
Second. Seconded by Lynn. Mary Beth.
So moved for Southborough and the Union.
Mary Beth moves for Southborough and the Union.
Second for Southborough.
Second for the Union.
Seconded by Roger for Southborough, seconded by Jerry for the Union.
So moved for Northborough.
Moved by Joan for Northborough.
Seconded for Northborough.
Seconded by Keith for Northborough.
I can roll for them?
Yes. No, we're all set, right?
Right.
All right, any other questions, discussions? Okay, all those in favor of the amended contract? Oh, does it have your roll call?
I think it has to be roll called.
It has to be roll called, right.
One more.
Roll call.
Yes, yes.
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 Yes. A resounding yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Well deserved.
Well deserved. Joan.
I make a motion to adjourn for Northborough.
All right, moved by Joan, seconded by Keith.
Motion to adjourn for Southborough.
Motion to adjourn to Southborough, for Southborough by Roger.
A motion to adjourn for the Union.
Mary Beth moves for the Union.
Now seconded Southborough and Union.
And seconded by Jerry for both Southborough and the Union. And region is going to stay in session. All those in favor? Don't.
Please, let us go.
Northborough, Southborough, and the Union are adjourned.
Five of nine, wow.
And region, the first thing we're doing is moving to second session.
Going to executive session.
Yes, I have. Absolutely, they're in a pile.
So I move for the region, that's the only one in session, that we move to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the committee with the intent to return to open meeting when we're done.
Seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Joan, moved by Paul Bucka, seconded by Joan, this is a roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes, sir.
Yes, all right. In executive session we go.
Never went out of session, regular session.
I gavelled this back in, combined.
Oh, okay.
I think you do.
I don't know.
You know what?
Use it.
There's no harm in gaveling.
Go ahead.
This is an extensive gavel, we're gonna use it. Okay, we are back. We are back in open session after executive session.
So we're changing the agenda around?
We're gonna change the agenda around a bit. So, if it is the will of the committee, what we would like to do is, because there are people in the audience that have been waiting very patiently and don't need to watch us talk about this. So, I would propose that we move new business up to the top of the agenda. If that, if everyone is so inclined to agree, okay, good. Then let us do that, and we'll go right into new business and the school improvement plan update.
Mr. Mead, long awaited.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much.
And final presentation of his school improvement.
That's right.
So I'm joined by two members of our school council. Spisha Geigas, who's a cast member here, a teacher in our school, and Ed Weiser. Ed Weiser is a parent in our community, but he's also a teacher at Brookline High School. So, they've joined me tonight to give you an overview of the school improvement plan, particularly the changes, the additions, the adjustments that we've made mid-course, so to speak, in this particular two-year plan. So, with that, I think we can get started, and we'll start with you, Spisha, talking about a few things.
Okay.
So you're in goal number one, is that right?
Goal number one, okay. One of the things that started up this year is the writing center at Algonquin, and it was started up by Sarah Stein and Seth Zarneki. And it's, this is the second semester that it's been running. The first semester, it was an after-school thing from two days a week, and the second semester, it, they opened up a few spots during the day where students can go in, and it was run by tutors who were students, and the students took an advanced writing class in order to be trained for this. And in the fall, there were 23 students who took the advanced class, and in the spring, there were 18 students. So that's the writing center. The second thing that, goal number two, goal number one, is the LMS, we're gonna be implementing the Canvas system, and the students are really excited about this. It's a great way to, for them to learn different things. And it's a management system that has a grade book, and it will replace EdLine. And teachers have been piloting this this past year, and with great results, and next, and teachers have gone through different training during this school year, and we'll be ready to start it next year.
So if I might step in here, we're working, still at goal number one, which is of course faculty and staff support. Activity number five talks about enhancing upper school student familiarity with careers and work. What we've been doing in that regard is a host of different things, but notably, seven years ago, we started a science career day. And by that, we brought in parents and others in the local community who were involved in careers in science. And they talked to classes in an organized way, wholly within the structure of the science courses. So, there was no loss of instruction time in any of the other topics and the other content areas, but that's been going on strong for seven years now. And what we decided was, heck, that's good enough pilot for us, let's try something else. So we did a math career day, just this past June 5th. We did our math career day, the first one. And with equal results, in the sense that we had parents, again, who are working in fields and professions related to mathematics, and they came in and talked to our students, again, about their careers, their pathways to those, and in some cases, how confused they were as high school students. So, a great deal of relevance and a really good invitation to our students to engage with them in terms of asking questions and that sort of thing. And that usually triggers questions. So, our plans for this are to expand it even further. We have about three different departments who raised their hands, said, yes, we'll do a career day too. So we'll make a choice on that next year, presumably, and, you know, again, add to what we think is very, a very good thing that we're doing in terms of coordinating and organizing visitors that come into our school that talk about their careers in different fields. So, CASA. Do you want to talk about goal number two and activity one?
Okay, sure. CASA is the Cultural Ambassador Student Association, which was before, under a different name, Diversity Awareness, and that's run by Nikki Ruffo. And it educates students on the diversity in the community, whether it's a religious or an ethnic diversity. And they do a lot of different events. One of the things that they did right before the carnival this year is they had a diversity show, which the whole school part was able to go watch. Another thing that they do is they do something that Nikki calls carnival, and it's outside of the cafeteria. And they try to spread the word as to what the group is about, and they do food, and they pamphlets. And they did a tie-dye thing this year to get kids involved in it. Next year, they're planning a trip to the African-American Museum in Boston, and a trip to New York City. So, they want to get a lot of kids involved. And one of the other things that they were gonna do is, like, the members of the group, they're gonna have, like, bring a friend along, so to include more kids to get involved in it.
So, another area that, in goal number two, this is activity number four, provide a safe, effective learning environment for students with physical slash mental health issues to transition into full school population. And we have two programs that are specifically geared around that. One is our RISE program, which has been ongoing for about six, seven years now. But new to the options that we have is the ACCESS program. And our ACCESS program is possible by a grant that we received through the Metro West Health Foundation. And we have basically a three-year grant that we're working on with the hopes of establishing a very effective program, again, designed to hasten and quicken our students' return to full-time status as students after they have suffered some sort of a setback. In the ACCESS program, it's often a physical setback, such as a concussion or surgery of some sort or that sort of thing. Whereas, in the past, we have, these students have really stayed home. We've provided tutoring services, that sort of thing, but we didn't think that was all in all very effective in terms of allowing our students to keep up with what's going on in class. So by bringing them back into the building physically, even if it's for just a short time during each day, it's a better, it's a better option for them. Interestingly, the ACCESS program is modeled on programs that have been already in existence around the Boston area. And one of the leading schools in this is Brookline. So, here's Ed, he's gonna talk a little bit about, about the program that they have at their school, because they're a year or two ahead of us in terms of what's, what they've done.
Yeah, briefly, I've, we've been doing it for a long time, there's been a, there are definitely some issues that we know that are hard to work around in terms of bringing a student back to the way that school is regularly done. And those same issues are definitely being worked on here at Algonquin. But it was really nice to see that, you know, there was a lot of outreach to other districts to try to figure out how to solve this very difficult problem, especially with a lot of concussions that we have to deal with as well, and trying to bring students back into the classroom that way.
So, Brookline, Algonquin, and I think there's four or five other schools that are part of this consortium of schools that are all doing basically the same thing. And, you know, we are tied together by the grant process through the Metro West Health Foundation. And we just underwent a site visit that sort of was an audit of our program. So, I was spoken to, we had a conversation, but also, everybody that works in the program, either directly or on the periphery of it, a lot of people were interviewed on that program too. So, you know, we're, we're, we're a thoroughly qualified and bona fide member of this organization, which is great because, as Ed says, you know, it's great to be collaborator with other schools and to learn from other schools in terms of how they do things successfully. So, we have access. Looking at activity number five in that goal, just briefly, the Metro West Health Risk Survey. We finally did get the results of that. We are poised, I think, to analyze those results rather fully at the beginning of next year, and, you know, take advantage of the new class coming in, the renewed energy that comes with the school in September, to look at the results of the Metro West Health Survey. We did have a sneak peek at that a little bit earlier this year. I think it was in early May when we got our results from the summary of those, of those findings. Very interesting look at things. If you're familiar with that format, they analyze risk responses that students make across gender, so boys and girls, they look across age groups, so nine through 12 in the school. They also look at school to school, so we can compare our school versus the rest of the schools. There's 22 schools in total, high schools, that participate in the survey. So we get the benefit of looking at particular data, you know, in a few different cuts, which is good. And again, it's something that the school will sink its teeth into come the start of next year.
Can I ask you just a quick, do they do year-over-year as well? This survey, does it show, here's where we were three years ago, here's where we were two years ago?
Yes, we do have the benefit now of longitudinal data, because we started this in 2010, and so they do it every other year. So we had 10, 12, 14, and now 16. So that's great to have that kind of track record.
Agreed. Thank you.
Number eight, the activity there, investigate options and alternatives for later start time. This is a recurring theme and a lively topic. And one of the things I think that we've understood is that the particular challenge that a regional school has is somewhat unique in terms of trying to solve this. Solving it would be to move the start time. So, one recent development that I've noticed that will probably help us a little bit is the Lincoln Sudbury School District has also undertaken this as, as a topic. So, therein lies maybe some potential liaison, if you will, or sharing of information with, you know, a district that's close by and also looking at this, that also is up against that same challenge that the regional schools have around transportation. So, again, we thought that, that bore, you know, a good reason for including it in this, in the school improvement plan. So, where are we, counselor? Three?
That sounds good. Goal three, unified team development. Currently, Algonquin has a unified track team, and this has been going on for about six years now. And a track team is for students with and without intellectual disabilities. And not only do we do that, but we also partner up with Westboro. So the two schools combine, come together, and make up one team. And it's a great opportunity for kids to shine and help their peers. Two years ago, we started a unified basketball team here with great success. It was a pilot program, and we had 25 students that wanted to be part of the program. Basketball team can have that many students in, but we worked it out, and they all had a great time. Last year, we ended up getting, actually, this past year, we ended up getting a grant from Special Olympics. I think it was about $1,000. And we had a great program this year. We had, we had, we cut it down to, I'd say about 20 students. So, we need to cut it down again for next year. And we've just filled out an application to do this again for next year. So, it's a great program.
Thank you, Spisha. Activity six mentions event support. Our school is constantly putting on one event after another. We do have the benefit of the Worcester State Cohort. We have a number of teachers, I think we have eight teachers in that program, who are interested in gaining their certification in supervision and principalship, assistant principalship, and so on. So, they're in the midst of that cohort, and in the coming year, they will be required to do an abundance of hours. And we're looking at that as a motherload of effort that can be elicited out of, out of the eight individuals that are in that program. So, we're looking forward to that, and in a lot of ways, event support, you know, in terms of helping us to not only run events, but also to make some effective use of feedback and that sort of thing, so that we can make improvements to our different events that we do. So, that's gonna be a big help to us as a school as a whole to do that. The last thing there on, that we'd like to kind of mention is the International Student Exchange, just an update on that. We're now looking at, I think, three students possibly to come to our school next year. One from Spain, one from China, and one from Vietnam. So, we're looking forward to that. We're also keeping the doors open, hoping that we might attract a couple more students. We'd like to get to about five students or so in that program. But, good, good early returns, if you will, on that, and we're looking forward to hosting those students. And just down to goal number, goal number five. Again, this is having to do with attracting and nurturing community support. Obviously, we do a lot of activities and events out in the towns of Northborough and Southborough. That goes on, that continues. These are things that we do with the senior centers or the social clubs. We work from time to time with the town offices on different kinds of projects, too. But we also enjoy the great generosity of the ed foundations in both towns, Northborough and Southborough. And their support for Algonquin has been remarkable and, and consistent over the years. So we really appreciate that. It's part of my job to try to encourage our teachers to apply for these grants because, you know, again, the generosity and the funding power of these ed foundations is significant and growing. So that's a terrific thing, and that helps us across the board. But it also encourages teachers to take the initiative, to ask for those sorts of things that will help their classroom and help their students. So, that's that. That's essentially it. It's a quick tour through the school improvement plan. There's a 16-page copy that you have on that, that's all been updated. In my experience here, this has been probably the most enthusiastic effort on the part of the parents, the teachers, and the students. So I really, really appreciate what they were able to do. They're very, very interested in doing everything they can to sort of help the school. Jackie Barnes was the author of this concept of having a quick sheet, a kind of a, maybe we don't say it in the schools too much, but it's a cheat sheet. It's a way of kind of summarizing in a quick way what we've been doing in the bigger document, the 16-page document. But my great thanks to Spisha and Ed for joining me tonight to talk about this, but we certainly will entertain any questions that you might have.
I, I, I just want to comment, frankly, the cheat sheets are terrific idea. We're able to get through an awful lot of material in a very short period of time. The, on the ACCESS, it mentions here there's a grant compliance site visit this month. So, the money to get the, on the grant, I mean, is that mostly to, like, transport kids that are hurting or, you know, back and forth to school? Or do they have special transportation needs that, that we have to honor as part of the ACCESS program?
That would only be really a minor part. I think the basic heft of the grant, if you will, goes to helping us to source personnel for, for the program. So, I know one of our positions is largely funded specifically by the grant. We have two positions, we have an adjustment counselor and a tutor for this program. And the other is for materials. So we have an account for materials that comes through the grant that helps us to bring in special kinds of materials that might be of assistance to students that need some, they have a physical disability, temporarily perhaps, but nevertheless, a disability that prevents them from maybe accessing or being in the classroom, that sort of thing. So that's, that's where a lot of that money goes.
So how many kids at a, at a time, I'm sorry, just as a follow-up, are on the, are in ACCESS program at any one point in time? Is it just a couple?
It's usually between five and 10 or so, and it varies in that regard. It, you know, between those numbers, but our throughput last year was 29. We got 29 students through in our first year of operation. And we're sort of, our year started in January, so we have to look January through December, and then that's a full year for us, so we had 29 there. We're on pace to probably slightly have a few more students than that this year. At the midway point, we're about at 17 students. So, again, if, if that holds, then we'll probably have somewhere in the neighborhood of 31 or 32 students going through.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I have two areas. The first one is the unified team. Was it just basketball, did we have that team, the unified team?
We have both track and basketball. Track's been going on for about six years, and this was the second season for basketball.
Spicious the coach.
And does, do those teams fall under the auspices of the athletic department?
Yes.
They do, okay. And my only suggestion on that is, and I think it's wonderful that you went to get a grant to help in the funding it, I would also suggest going to the Northborough Ed Foundation and the Southborough Ed Foundation, because they also give grants to Algonquin, and you might be able to get two, you know, one year. So that'd be one, wonderful, that's a great idea. And then the other one was on these exchange students. Do we have the families already set up for these three? Or are we still just in the process of working out the applications?
Well, we, we work in advance of that with both of our, we're working currently with two agencies, the Cambridge Institute and also CIEE. And both of them have programs for recruiting host families, so, and that requires us to do our part, which is to talk to our communities about their interest in being a host family. And, and again, I post that out from time to time through one calls to our community about people that might be interested in being a host family.
Okay, and will these be like the Cambridge one where it was only a one-year exchange? Will this be still one year if we do through CII?
Yeah, that's generally what all these programs are, they're one-year programs. Sometimes they're half-year, but, but most, most often, they're full-year programs. But just for a year.
How did the current exchange student we have, how was that year?
That was a full year.
And how did that, how did this go for the?
It went very well.
Did it?
It did. There were some early, early changes around the host family arrangement, which the agency was very helpful in coordinating that. Ultimately, things settled down rather quickly for our student, which we were thankful for, because, you know, we don't, we don't want our students to be troubled by things, and when you're 8,000 miles away from home, you know, it's, it's a daunting sort of thing. But Jessie did very well. She was inducted into the Math Honor Society in this very room, and that's the first induction group that we've ever had, so she was a part of that. But she was also active in other extracurricular activities, too. So, she did very well.
Thank you for the wonderful presentation, thank you for staying in the, for your volunteer on the school council, thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much, there's a ton of work, clearly, that has gone into this and continues to go into it, and a ton of people, I'm sure, that, you know, just spend countless hours. So thank you very, very much for everything that you've contributed.
Okay. We're still on new business, and district treasurer report and appointment.
Well, we are very fortunate and excited to have Christine Takez still with us. She's patiently been waiting back there. We had mentioned when Christine joined us in January as our new district treasurer, newly appointed, that she would be providing an update on her experiences in the district since coming, since joining us in January. And since she's here this evening, she's been investigating OPEB. And we had an occasion to have a great conversation at the regional subcommittee meeting, I think it was last week, where a lot of this information that she's gonna share this evening was discussed. And then as a final piece to this, I'm sure that once you learn of all of what she's been doing since January to move our district forward, particularly here at the regional level, as regional district treasurer, you'll entertain my recommendation to appoint, to reappoint Mistake for the next school year, 17, 18, that will come. So I just wanted to say that before I forget. And so, I just wanted to say that before I forget with the lateness of the hour. So, with that, I'd like to welcome you to the table.
Thank you and welcome, everyone. Since it's so late, I will keep my comments as brief as possible. During the past five months, I've met with many individuals as the district treasurer to ensure a cohesive, transparent relationship throughout the transition. I've met with our fiscal advisor, David Eisenhall. He is responsible primarily with any borrowing needs we may have. I've met with Stacy Johnson. She's our rep when it comes to the depository accounts with UniBank. Tom Scanlon, who is the principal on the audit for the regional district. And Clifton Lawson and Allen. I'm still getting familiar with all these names. John Sullivan is a principal with them. I've also participated in discussions with them concerning modules as it relates to accounts receivable, accounts receivable module, which we are hoping to implement sometime in September. I've also participated... My past experience is with budget sense, so I'm pretty familiar with the whole financial structure that exists. I've established relationships with both state and federal agencies. I've been in communication with the Internal Revenue Service as it relates to reporting responsibilities, year-ending, quarterly. I've also, we also have meetings every week with the business administrator and the superintendent to ensure that there's a constant flow of open dialogue between the three different areas of responsibility. One of the primary accomplishments, we've had several accomplishments in the last five months. And I'd also like to share with the school committee that the central office finance staff, from my experience, is very, very... They're thoughtful, they're dedicated employees, and I really do enjoy working with them all. They've been extremely helpful, you know, in all instances. Even if I'm only the regional treasurer with anything to deal with the central office. And I thank everyone. But we've implemented positive pay, which basically is a payment control mechanism for both payable and accounts payable. It allows us to monitor and reject payments for inconsistencies such as the payee, the amount, the date. If anything is wrong, it is rejected until we approve it that particular day by eleven o'clock. So far, we've only had one inconsistency, and it really wasn't an inconsistency. It was the signature was too far up on the check, so it was bounced back. In today's world, I think, you know, this technology is a significant plus for the district. We've also migrated all our local depository accounts to UniBank for school lunch deposits, student activity deposits that happened in March. So, we're well on our way there. Recently, the food service audit indicated that we need separate depository accounts for food service because of federal monies that are involved. And I've opened up those accounts, separate accounts for both UniBank and UniBank. And we'll start that effective July first, just to be responsive to the audit. The most significant accomplishment, I believe, is the redo of the treasurer's cashbook. Historically, the previous process was antiquated. And this new process is more in line with the Treasurer Collectives Association of Reconciliation. And it was established by the guides of the association. The previous method, as I indicated, was antiquated. I think I'd still be working on the reconciliation for December if it hadn't changed it. The school committee obviously signs off on all expenditures for payroll and accounts payable. These transactions should mirror the bank statements. And the only differences should be deposit, timing differences in deposits and outstanding checks and voided checks. Because that's what the school committee is signing off on. And this is the process by which we have a better handle on, a more efficient and effective manner in which we're reconciling our general books to our bank statements. As we look forward to year-end, we will be involved, the central office staff collectively, in closing out the books, reconciling all the bank statements to the general books. And once all of that has happened, as the treasurer, I will assist in the indecertification process, hopefully to have year-end results in your September meeting. So, that's quite a bit from my perspective. Does anyone have any questions?
Paul?
I have one. Just that treasurer reconciliation book change that you just mentioned you made, has Tom Scanlon kind of gone over those procedures and stuff? They blessed all that?
They've blessed that, as well as the other firm that's consulting.
Okay, terrific. Thank you very much.
Clifton and Lawson. And quite frankly, it's more in line because we have separate bank accounts for payroll. It really is more in line with how the bank statements should be reconciled. And they have blessed it. So, that's the good news. Any other questions?
Paul?
If I could make a motion to reappoint Ms. Christine Tagg to the district treasurer for the 2017-2018 school year?
Second.
Moved by Paul Becker, seconded by Joan. Any questions or discussion? All those in paper? That is unanimous.
Nicely done.
Just briefly, I'll speak about OPEB. Superintendent asked because of some experiences I've had in my previous subjects to evaluate the options for OPEB. OPEB is basically other post-retirement benefits created as a result of retirees. Your current liability, which is currently going under another review as required by statute, is $10.7 million. And that's anticipated to grow over the next several years unless changes are made. Most communities, as well as school districts, regional school districts, have not established any kind of funding mechanisms. The one that, the one communities or regional school districts that have are... They have dedicated streams of revenue outside of assessments to the towns. For example, the town of Plainville is utilizing the gambling proceeds from their casino that was recently implemented to fund their OPEB. It's a one-time revenue stream. I'm not really too aware of any regional district that's set up any mechanism for addressing this at this stage. We had discussion at my Dover Sherburne Regional School District budget, during the budget process. But again, it came back to, it's really an assessment back to the two towns if you don't have a dedicated revenue stream. So, as a result, there are three options. One is an OPEB trust fund, which is established under Mass. General Law 32B, section 20, I believe. That is a very complex and costly program that you would only implement if you had a dedicated funding source, because it is costly. And I would like to look into the options of the cost. For example, a trust would have to be written by an attorney as far as, you know, the irrevocable needs of the trust, et cetera. And also, the trustee fees that you would pay, and where's the break-even point? So, I'd like to approach that throughout the next couple of months to have a recommendation for the school committee in September. All, the next two options, as well as the trust, all require an annual town meeting approval after a majority vote by school committee of the district. The next one is Mass. General Law, chapter forty, I believe it's... Section 5B, allows for municipalities and districts to establish multiple stabilization funds. I originally was leaning towards that as a recommendation to school committee. However, upon further investigation with our bond counsel, as well as DSC, it was determined that statute itself is ambiguous. However, DSC is saying it does require annual town meeting, annual time meeting vote to establish, but also annual town meeting as well to utilize the funds. So, I wouldn't recommend that from a flexibility perspective to the school committee. The last option is, you're probably familiar with it. It's chapter seventy-one, section sixteen G and a half. And it allows the school committee, upon town meeting approval, to put money into a stabilization fund through appropriation during the general budget process. Once the fund has been established, school committee can utilize the proceeds of that fund for whatever purposes without, just a majority vote with school committee. The beauty of that particular section allows school committee to put that money into the fund and, at some point, can transfer that money into the trust fund. So, there's flexibility there. If you have a very particular good year, you can actually transfer it into the trust fund from the stabilization fund. So, it adds a little bit of commitment to the, from the town's perspective, in my opinion. So, I would recommend that as the option with addition to establishment of a trust fund through the nineteen budget process.
So, this is the item we talked about during budget planning. We had some fancy words.
Originally, I was proposing chapter forty, but it doesn't give the school committee flexibility.
I mean, I don't think, do we need a motion? We need a motion. The other treasurer, you tell us what the right options are.
The motion would come during the budget process. I would put money in the budget process as a budgeted line item, as well as have the vote to establish the stabilization fund for the school committee, which then would go to town meeting.
So, just to clarify, the trust would be something that we would do down the road because it's costly. Maybe either we have a discover manna from heaven and have a stream, revenue stream, or we build the stabilization fund up to a level that we could establish the trust fund. It would make sense.
You could establish the trust fund without funding it and having no investments. You wouldn't incur those fees. So, we could do that, you know, at the same time. But we would have to establish, we'd have some legal fees when it comes to the establishment and wording of the actual trust. But yeah, we could do that. And the last, last but not least, I know it's been a long night. One of the options when I first came in, we met with David, our fiscal advisor, and he was recommending looking at an advanced refunding. But unfortunately, we're already past that timetable. An advanced refunding allows you to call your bonds prior to the ten-year call. You have to put the money in escrow, and you can't have arbitrage. And the savings is minimal compared to a regular refunding, which we will be looking at for the FY19 budget process. And that's basically calling the bonds. The estimate he provided us with, based on the current rate environment, was a potential savings of $350,000, given the rate environment. We're going to look at that again in November and come to school committee with the results of that.
You have been busy, and we appreciate it. And thank you very much for staying so late.
Thank you very much. It's really a pleasure to work here.
Want a cupcake? We're going to meet him in the dark in fifteen minutes.
All right. Still staying in new business. We are on to athletics update.
What time do the lights go out? Ten or eleven? Okay, we have plenty of time.
I don't think you want to see half of the slide, so let's try this again.
Thank you again for the opportunity to be here and to speak to you about impact information and some concussion data for the 2016-17 school year. So, just a little refresher, and I'm sure we're all aware, because concussions are at the forefront. But a concussion is a type of traumatic brain injury. It's a bump, a blow, or a jolt of the head that causes your brain to move back and forth quickly. And what are some of the symptoms and signs of concussions? They can range from a mild concussion to a very severe concussion. You can have headache, you can have dizziness, you can have lack of concentration. The more severe cases of a concussion might be nausea, inability to concentrate for long periods of time. So, and no two concussions are the same. So, the type of symptoms that any student athlete is going to be experiencing is very different for each student athlete, or for anyone who experiences a concussion. So, in our ARHS Guide to Athletics, if a student athlete sustains a concussion, there are certain steps that need to be followed. So, the student athlete needs to be seen by a primary care physician. And then, we need that signed note from the primary care physician on recommendations for return-to-play protocol. And there's a variety of ways that you will see a physician note. Some might just say it's a blanket two weeks. Others might be more specific in the return-to-play steps that they want their patient to take. Final clearance for participation is determined by the athletic trainer after the return-to-play protocol has been completed. So, even if a doctor says, okay, he's all set to come back on June 22nd, they would still need to complete that return-to-play protocol. And I'll explain what that is in just a second so that they can get back on the playing field or on the court as quickly but as safely as possible. So, this is what a typical return-to-play protocol looked like. The student athlete needs to be asymptomatic for about forty-eight hours prior to being... The student athlete needs to be asymptomatic for about forty-eight hours prior to beginning any return to play protocol. And it first starts with light aerobic activity, walking, light jogging, but no resistance training, so they're not going to be lifting any weights at all. Then, you move to sport-specific training, stretching, agility work, sprinting, but there's no equipment and there's no contact. Then, you go to light contact. So, you would resume light body contact drills, limit direct shots to the head contact, and light resistance training, so they might be able to go into weight room and do some of the weightlifting routine, but it's light. It's not full throttle. Then, we have full contact, which is the next step. So, they're fully participating in a practice, all areas, sprinting, they're in the weight room, participating in all the activities that they need to participate in, and the air resistance training in full. And then, the last step is game play. So, that's typically what a return to play protocol is going to look like for a student athlete when they're coming back from a concussion. Here's some concussion data over the past few years. These are Algonquin Regional High School's sport-related concussions. In the thirteen fourteen school year, we had twenty-seven concussions. In the fourteen fifteen school year, there were thirty-eight. In the fifteen sixteen school year, there were thirty-seven. In this past school year, the sixteen seven school year, we had twenty-four sport-related concussions. IMPACT testing. So, this year, we were excited to add a new, a tool to the toolbox to help with concussion management for student athletes and for their parents and guardians. What is IMPACT testing? Everybody hears about it, they might not know exactly what it stands for. It's immediate post-concussion assessment and cognitive testing. So, it's a non-invasive test. It's set up like a video game. It takes about twenty minutes for anybody to go through and complete the test. It tracks information, reaction time, speed, memory, concentration, and the best way to say it is it's like a preseason physical for your brain. Some frequently asked questions that come up with IMPACT testing that have come up this year as well. Is IMPACT testing mandatory at Algonquin? Absolutely not. We don't make it mandatory, but we do try to educate on the value of the baseline testing and encourage participation. It's a very valuable tool for use between families and their parent, and their primary care physicians. Is it necessary in order to participate in athletics at Algonquin? It's not, but is a district we're pleased to offer that tool. What are the responsibilities of the parent guardian? The parent guardian should ensure that the student athlete takes the test according to the instructions. Who sees those test results? They're not viewed or interpreted by any school personnel. They are for the parent guardian, the student athlete, and their primary care physician. How do I access the IMPACT test? Upon written request from parents and guardians and per request of a health care provider, a copy of the results will be provided. They need to contact the athletic trainer at Algonquin Regional High School for a copy of the results. So, those are some of the questions that have come up regarding IMPACT testing. Here's some more data for the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year. This year, we had two hundred and fifty-two student athletes complete the IMPACT testing. In the fall, when we ran it as a pilot, we had two hundred and forty-six student athletes participate in it. In the winter, we had four who took it, and in the spring, we had two who took it. But, don't be fooled by those numbers in the winter and the spring. A hundred and sixty-three played multiple sports. So, if they took it in the fall, if they were taking it for football in the fall, you might find that they were a wrestler in the winter or played lacrosse in the spring. So, a hundred and sixty-three of all of those played more than one sport. Like I said, twenty-four sport-related concussions here at Algonquin this year for the sixteen seventeen school year. Here's how it broke down for concussions. In the fall, there were eleven total concussions. Of the eleven, eight took the IMPACT test, three did not. In the winters, there were seven total concussions, seven did not take the IMPACT test. In the spring, there were six total concussions, one took the IMPACT test in a fall sport, five did not take the IMPACT test. And what you'll find of some of the student athletes who didn't take the tests, those were your non-high-contact sports. These are what we consider our high-contact sports here at Algonquin. Football, soccer, cheer, basketball, wrestling, gymnastics, ice hockey, ski, baseball, softball, lacrosse, and rugby. So, those would be considered your high-contact sports. I spent some time speaking with some of the people at the MIAA to get a little bit more information about IMPACT across the state and how schools are using it. So, the MIAA got behind the IMPACT testing this year and we're supporters of IMPACT testing as a great tool to be used for parents and guardians and student athletes. This year alone, a hundred and fifty schools signed up with IMPACT for the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year. In total, right now across the state, there are two hundred and fifty-six schools that are using IMPACT testing as a concussion management tool. There are additional schools beyond those two hundred and fifty-six, but they use it through a third-party venue. So, they might use it, they might have their student athletes go to a hospital to take the IMPACT testing there. So, two hundred and fifty-six specific school districts have it. Beyond that, there are more that use it through a third party. I've also spoken to a variety of schools across the state on how they utilize IMPACT testing, kind of how they implement it. Some schools make it mandatory for all their student athletes yearly. Some make it mandatory for the athletes twice in the four years, in their four years of high school. Some make it mandatory for high-impact sports only, and some are completely voluntary. And there's no right or wrong answer on it, it's just how the schools want to best utilize that IMPACT testing and provide for their student athletes and their parents or guardians. But, those are some of the ways in which the schools use it. How impactful, now, we love this tool. We want this tool, we want parents and guardians to know how great this tool is, how can we get this information out to them so that they are aware of the benefits of this tool? So, we have athletic nights with parents and guardians and student athletes. We'll be having three this year. We typically have two, but we want to bump it to three so that we can provide the opportunity for more information in each of the three seasons. So, we'll have a fall athletic night, a winter athletic night, and a spring athletic night. We also talked about providing some information at freshman orientation for those parents of incoming ninth graders. APTO newsletter was another way that we could send out information on the benefits of IMPACT testing. And then, on top of that, some specific program talks with the athletic trainer and student athletes, the one-on-one with each of the programs about the benefits of IMPACT testing and how important it is, how important concussion management is. And then, online resources through the website, working with Julie Doyle on providing the best online resources about, and information on concussion management and IMPACT testing. So, that's how we're looking to communicate it for the upcoming school year. Specifically here, the dates that we're looking at for the upcoming year for providing that information. So, freshman orientation, August twenty-third. Fall athletic night is slated for September fifth in the auditorium. Winter athletic night, December fourth, and spring athletic night, March twenty-seventh. So, right there are four ways in which we're going to try and provide information on IMPACT testing and concussion management. And I think that's it on information on IMPACT and concussion. I'd be happy to answer any questions about that and then I'd like to provide you with some information on spring athletics.
So, I, so my two boys that play football, they actually took it. Because, for whatever reason, she didn't have the code. Can I, just as a suggestion, when you go to the winter, the nights, the sport nights, I think it'd be really helpful to have this sheet that has a code on it so parents can take them because they were in the athletic office. And, you know, when you're running in and running out and stuff like that, you're not going to miss the, come to your office and your kid's not going to remember.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You know what I mean? Like, it's going to be hidden someplace. So, if you can have those available for parents to take with them, I think that especially, you know, in the high-impact sports, it'd be great to have more kids take them. Paul?
So, if we think this is so great and other schools make it mandatory, why don't we just make it mandatory?
It's something that we could definitely consider as a committee. We've worked on it with the Health and Wellness Committee about ways to continue to evolve it as a tool that we use here at Algonquin. So, that is definitely something that we can talk about with the Health and Wellness Committee.
As we've discussed when this was rolled out, we actually had, I think, some language from, I don't know where it came from, but what we did was send it to council as we normally would. And the way that it was initially written prior to the first introduction, if you will, to the parent community suggested that the district had a higher level of responsibility than we actually do in this testing process. And so, it was at that time that council recommended that we move forward with it, we modify the language, and that, in fact, we did not want to make it mandatory based on what he perceived as an expectation that the district had a higher responsibility in terms of the testing process and what was going to happen with the results. And so, at that point, based on where we were in September and the launch, it was suggested that we not. We can certainly revisit that now that we have some, you know, definitely refined practices. I think we also have to have a plan, which we didn't have, which is if we say it's mandatory and they don't take it, does that mean the child doesn't play? What's the consequence, right? So, I think that now we have time to be able to think about this a little bit more carefully, revise that, fill the gaps that were there when this was first introduced, and then come back with that.
Well, there's also some number of known schools that make it mandatory already. We can find out what their experience is on, but their turn isn't bad.
We actually used their language. I think it was Schubert that Kara gave, and our council said, we don't, you know, gave some suggestions.
Do those schools make it mandatory for all sports or just for certain sports?
So, I've come across both. Some do it for the high-contact sports and some do it for all. Joan?
I have a suggestion just when you, on the slide that you said communicate to parents. I think another organization, another way it means would be through the boost organization.
Absolutely.
You know, so I think that's, you know, you're trying to hit as many parents as you can, and I think that would be a great way. My question was, where and how is this administered? You were talking about a code. So, did they do it at home?
So, the kids come home with a code and they go up on a computer and you take a test?
So, it's a computer test. So, they ask you the same question, I think, a few times, maybe word a little differently, but they have to multiple answers. And so, that's their baseline. So, if they, in my case, I've not had concussions, but I believe if you have concussions, you go back and take the same test again?
If your health care provider asks for a repeat test, you can do a repeat test.
Yeah. And my, and my pediatrician suggested that they take it because they were playing hockey, you know, forever. And then, I never had to do it, but football I did. And then, my other follow-up, nothing, on to the subject, but nothing on your slides. You had that, there was a high level of students that had concussions. So, those reported to you, do you have communication with their teachers? Because I know some students have, you know, concussions, they cannot be reading anything, they can't have any technology. So, I want to know how is that put into your schoolwork so they are not affected? Do you have communication with their teachers?
Actually, that's communicated through the Health Department. So, that would be Sherri Karen and Josine Fishman who send that out. It is a conversation, or it is the athletic trainer, the athletic director, the Health Department are all involved in knowing if that there is a concussion going on, where they are at in the process. But, it is the Health Department that sends out the email to the teachers, letting them know that they might have restrictions on, you know, they might be in for half-days or they might be able, whatever the restriction is that they put in there. But, that is sent out from the Health Department.
And is that a report that you also see, so that you're aware of it?
So, I am also included on that email that is sent out to those teachers, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, move on. I do want to give a shout-out to the Health and Wellness Department. They worked very closely on this language, as well as Jonathan Driscoll, the athletic trainer. When we initially, there was a start and then we pulled it back and then we started again to do a more fully in-depth implementation. And they spent a lot of time working on this language and working on, you know, how this was going to be presented to the community initially. So, I think they had tremendous insightful insight and added a wealth of experience and knowledge to the overall conversation. And Lori Pardi as well. Thank you. Spring athletics.
So, I would like to provide you an update on spring athletics. As you all know, the hours late, but I want to give you some information. Just to give you an update on how our teams fare at the end of the spring season. So, our baseball team advanced to the sectional quarterfinal.
Our boys lacrosse team advanced to the sectional quarterfinal. Our girls lacrosse advanced to the sectional semifinal. The lacrosse has changed so that the sectional semifinals up until the finals are at the higher seed. So, they no longer play at neutral sites for the semifinals, which is unfortunate. So, they took the long trek out to Long Meadow this year for the girls, and the boys did as well. Our unified track team finished second at the sectional meet. Our boys volleyball team advanced to the sectional semifinals. Our girls rugby team advanced to the state finals. It was an excellent game up at Endicott College. It was a showcase for rugby as the first state championship in the state of Massachusetts and in the country, and our girls rugby team was a part of it. So, that's history-making right there, and it, boy, was it fun to watch. Our boys rugby team advanced to the state semifinals. Our girls tennis team advanced to the sectional quarterfinals. And our boys tennis team advanced to the sectional finals. And a specific congratulations to Ryan Farhart and Christian Jorgensen. They finished as central sectional champions in the, as doubles teams in the individual MIAA tournament. So, they had a tremendous year in the individual tournament. So, as you can see, our teams performed really well this spring. We had thirty mid-watch All-Stars this spring. We had nine, now rugby doesn't fall under the mid-watch, so we had nine rugby All-Stars between the boys and the girls. And twelve of our student athletes finished as T and G All-Stars, which is good. Twenty-one of our student athletes made it to the Central West Championship meet for track. So, those are some of our All-Star numbers. And tomorrow night, I'll be attending, is the first-ever Best of Home Team All-Star banquet. It's put on by the Telegram and Gazette. So, anybody in the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year who is either an honorable mention or made first-team All-Star for the Telegram and Gazette was invited to this banquet. So, we have fifty-seven student athletes from fall, winter, and spring athletics who were either first-team or honorable mention who will be attending that banquet tomorrow night at the DCU Center. Pedro Martinez is going to be the guest speaker there tomorrow night. So, it's outstanding. We are extremely well represented there. So, that's going to be a fun night tomorrow night with all those kids. Joan, I know you had asked about intramurals. I just wanted to provide you an update on that and what was offered as intramurals this year. So, tennis was offered, wiffle ball was offered, indoor soccer, but the one that all of the kids was drawn, were drawn to was Ultimate Frisbee. So, that ran in both the fall and in the spring, and they had about thirty participants in the fall and just about the same amount in the spring as well. So, that was the popular intramural event for the school year. I know Kathleen, you had asked about student athletes who are going on to participate at the next level, and if you bear with me, I just want to share with you where some of our athletes are going to be going next year. So, football, we have a very large number of student athletes playing. So, Jack Derulskis is going to WPI to play. Nathan Cooley, Hobart College, Joe Venzel, Endicott. Colin Robinson, Western New England, Brett Sherman, Endicott. Ryan Barry, Lake Forest, Nick Morrell, Ohio Wesleyan, and Max Sarasoli, Bridgeton Academy. All of those student athletes are going on to play football at the college level. For boys soccer, we have Sebastian Royal playing at WPI. Wrestling, Bryce Finnegan is going to Springfield. For cheer, Molly O'Driscoll is going to Syracuse. Samantha Brazio is going to UMass Amherst, and Kylie Eckler is going to the University of Delaware for cheer. For girls soccer, Kate Hostage is going to Syracuse. Meg Stassi is going to South Carolina Upstate, and Mackenzie Smith is going to Brandeis. For baseball, Andrew Tache is going to Southern New Hampshire University, and Cam Brooks is going to Colby-Sawyer. And then, for rugby, Matt Paglia is going to be playing at Providence College, Cole Maslaka at New Haven, and then Nate Portius at UVM. So, that's an update on where some of our student athletes are going to be participating in athletics beyond high school. So, that is some of the information on spring athletics. As you can see, it has been a tremendous year for our student athletes. Oh, one more thing I did want to share. We had twelve, twelve of our seniors earned the T-Hawk Twelve Seasons Student Athlete Award. So, there are twelve kids who participated in all twelve seasons here at Algonquin, which is outstanding. That's truly, you know, a commitment to academics and athletics. So, so that's some information on spring athletics.
Okay. A lot of information.
I had a question on.
Need that IMPACT test?
Yeah. I failed. I failed. I'm sure. No. A suggestion through the chair, when you talked with Christine. I know in the past, we have had the numbers of the students for the fall, winter, and spring and intramurals. And it was a breakdown by the sports number of the students that are in it. So, I can't request it, but I'll ask the chair through, through the chair to ask Christine.
That's information updated next year.
That's next year, okay. And I wanted to also know that through the principal's report, not the And I wanted to also know that through the principal's report, not the report, the school and premium plan, he mentioned that there was a thousand-dollar grant that was through Special Olympics that was given to the unified team. Do you know what that was used for and how that helped the program?
So they wanted to know if they could use it for uniforms, and absolutely, that was something that, it was under the grant that it fell under that they could use it for, so I think they were pursuing uniforms with that grant.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, I think the last question that we had outstanding from the last meeting was, I think there needed to be some clarification about the uniforms, that there was still money left over in the uniform budget, and sort of like how that happens, what the process is, and, you know, why there might be money still left over that, you know, in May.
So here are the teams that had subsidized funding from, from the budget this year. Girls cross-country and track, boys soccer, girls lacrosse, girls rugby, and boys rugby. So each of those, all of the teams were set up on a rotation on how old are the uniforms based upon booster information and how uniforms had been purchased, because up until recently, all uniforms were fundraised through boosters and purchased through boosters. So going back and checking everything out, and how old are the uniforms, and how long have you had them, we set up a rotation on the most needed uniforms. And usually you're looking at a five-year rotation. That's pretty much the length of what your uniform is going to be. So based on that, we set up a rotation among all the sports programs, and this year, those are the teams that had money that were put towards their uniforms.
Okay, so the fact that there was money in the budget.
So there's, there's not even close to that amount at this point right now, after all the transactions have gone through.
Right, it was just an accounting kind of lag, what's the real lag? Joan?
Because my question was, if they, if the thousand-dollar grant from Special Olympics went for the uniforms, why didn't we buy the uniforms?
So they weren't sure they were going to go with the uniforms. They had, they had not decided what they wanted to do. So that was, you know, that was a conversation with Spisha and Ken on, on how do you want to do it, can we get uniforms if we want? So they, that's the route they were going, but not that that has happened yet, so.
Okay, all right. And I just have one other question came back. We used to have a student athletic council. Is that still a place? I haven't heard anything about it, but I don't have any students here at this district.
So I've done it as a captain's council with our meetings that start up in the fall, with the big one, we have one, this year it's coming up on August twenty-second, so we have a captain's council. So a little bit different terminology, but relatively the same thing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Ben, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kara.
What?
I said thank you.
Oh. I thought you were going to make a motion. I'm like, there's no motion to be made.
I can make a motion on the next item if you'd like.
Yes, you can. Let's read what it is first, shall we? The next item on the agenda is to ratify the agreement with the Algonquin Regional High School Custodians and Algonquin Regional Teachers Association, Unit C Educational Support Professionals.
If I could, I move that because these contracts comply with guidelines provided by both towns to us, and because they are also similar to the other contract that we negotiated with the teachers' union this year at a two percent cost of living adjustment for, for these two groups of people, I vote that we ratify the agreements that we have reviewed in executive session with the Algonquin Regional High School Custodians and the Algonquin Regional Teachers Association, Unit C Educational Support Professionals.
Whoa. Okay. That's good. Moved by Paul.
Seconded.
Seconded by Lynn. Any discussion or questions? All is in favor. That is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Good job.
Next is 2017-18 Subcommittee Assignments.
The information is in your package regarding the assignments. I think there's some modifications to different committees and maybe some reactivation of others. Trying to talk as parent as possible. Generally speaking, I think it's gone one way or the other, where people submit their requests to the chair. There is a request that I would have, that we do solicit input on the policy subcommittee. The intent is for our three policy subcommittees and maybe a fourth to combine to convene this summer to get a jumpstart on the year. It's oftentimes difficult to plan that during the school year, and people have busy lives, and to really try to get ahead of the policies, that will give us time to submit them to council for review and then really make, get some closure through the school year by meeting maybe three times instead of an hour here or there.
Lynn?
I just have a question. So every time, so we, when we have the subcommittee meetings and we're trying to set it up, does that due to Paul, go to all the school committee members or just the members of the particular subcommittee, like to start?
It go, it is one or the other. We've had occasion to send it out to everyone if we haven't gotten response, a timely response or enough response from the liaisons, because sometimes we keep an eye over that. Because we have had difficulty in getting some quorms, because everyone has busy schedules, we've of late sent it out to everyone. What we try to do is really select the significant numbers of people who are actually assigned to the committee on a particular day, and sometimes it works out really well and sometimes it doesn't. And that's why I'm hopeful if we give enough notice and we are plentiful, like doing a summer and then moving from there, that we might be able to get, capture the committee. The liaisons that are assigned to the committee certainly first and foremost.
Okay.
Yeah, and we intended not to send it out to the entire committee unless we didn't get a lot of response back from the members in the subcommittee because of time.
Okay, so basically, the people that are on the subcommittee, their responses are looked at first to try to set of a meeting. If you can't, then you go to the other.
Yeah.
Because I was just, if it goes out to everyone, I know we have everyone's a subcommittee alternate, but if we send it out to all the members and it's equal billing, then it's like everyone's a subcommittee member too. So I, I sort of didn't want us to be crossing that line.
And we generally don't unless we don't either get a timely response, that we don't see a quorum, and then we say, okay, we've got to open this up to everybody.
Yeah.
And most of the time, it works really well like that, and once in a while it doesn't. So that's what we've been trying to do, but thank you for that, because we will certainly make sure we keep up with that practice.
And Kathleen?
Yes.
When would you like these, our requests to be sent to you by?
So there's a bunch of openings, and I think we do need to get the three.
Policy payroll and?
Policy payroll and warrants, and I would actually also like operational budget subcommittee, so that we could meet over the summer. So, policy payroll, operational budget, and what was the third?
I think I can buy.
Oh, you could, payroll and warrants, okay. So policy, payroll, and operational budget, and actually, if everybody wants to stay on them, we're okay with policy and payroll, and we just have one opening on budget, if everyone wants to stay.
Yeah, I'll stay on the ones I'm on.
And.
I'll stay on mine.
So what, for the new members, what we typically do is we try to balance North Row and South Row, and, but I don't see why we need to limit it, no. So if you want to be involved, feel free to, to volunteer. So we will look for, unless Mrs. Frank wants to be on operational budget.
Due to my new.
Unemployed status.
Unemployed status. Just being retired. I think I will go off operational, because we may be traveling or going to Arizona in a little.
Oh, so you're going to leave? Oh, my God, okay. All right, now you're.
Are you going to invite us? Can we have our meeting then, like February? Yeah, I'll stay.
I have lodging.
Okay, that only is affected operational budget, okay. At least for the summer. All right, so when do I want them? You know, as soon as possible. I mean, for the new members, I want to give them, you know, sort of time to understand what the different subcommittees are, but I'm still going to say, let's do September. So think about it over the summer. If you have questions, feel free to call any of us, either any of us on the school committee or anybody in the district, and we will answer any questions that you have.
In the policy, we still have a quorum. We have three and four, if the current members are on, if no one else signed up over the summer, right? How about this one? Okay. And we have a working subcommittee, operational budget subcommittee, that has met and prepared documents in preparation of the operational budget subcommittee, so I would assume the working group can meet.
Right, okay. All right, so as soon as possible, preferably September.
Cheryl? So I, I think that we need a couple of more volunteers for payroll warrants over the summer.
Oh, that's right, yes, we do. Please, we do. So, yeah, we do.
Can I ask, what, what is that? Like, what do you guys do?
You go to the central office and you sign payroll, like you sign warrants.
But you do it with alternate. I think I do that every week. Yeah, it's the same. So just put me on there.
So it's for the summer.
Are we all backups?
Yeah, we are all backups, so.
I get the phone.
I think we're trying to identify who's around during the summer.
Can you come in?
Are you around?
I'm not.
Mr. Southborough? I'm just picking on you, because you're Southborough, and Southborough is easiest to get to central office.
Yeah.
So we will put, yeah.
He's not here, we could put him on.
Oh, Mr. Desmond. We're putting Mr. Desmond on, all right. All right, he's good, you can backfill him.
Price to pay for that one.
That's right, you're not here, be careful. All right, is that enough for?
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Your summer requirement? Okay, so September, let's get these, your requests to sign them sent by. Update on the principal's report.
Well, by now, I think everyone knows that Tom is retiring. We thought if we could have this meeting till midnight each day, but it's not going to work out that way. And we have appointed Sarah Praglewski Walsh. Dr. Walsh has been out and about around the campus quite often, has participated in an all-day site visit where a number of committee members were present, if not all, and most recently last night was another meet and greet. I know she's met with Mr. Mead, she's participated in interviews, and I think we're off to a rousing and very exciting start or ending, beginning somewhere in process. It's exciting. And we also have been interviewing for assistant principals. We had seven interviews this week, I think, and it was a full day, and thanks to the people, the teachers who served on that, and a very, possibly a future senator, a member of the freshman class, served on that committee as well, Mr. Green. And two finalists were brought to my, to my office, and we have conducted interviews, and I'm hopeful that we will have an announcement very soon.
Good. Excellent.
So we are, I think, in good shape at least at this point.
Okay, then, moving on to superintendent's report to the committee, principals' report.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Briefly, I can go through this.
Joe Chee Chee.
Chee Chee. The aforementioned NISPAC Awards Night, those are our recipients from Algonquin, you can see listed there. Also, special kind of event that we had due to scheduling conflicts for the Special Olympics that's usually held at Bowditch Field in Framingham. Couldn't make that as a, as a district, so on June eighth, ARHS, the Algonquin campus hosted the K-12 Algonquin Games. So that was run by Franken Ellenbach, who's an adaptive phys ed teacher itinerant in the district. Did a very nice job. We got good cooperation from our staff, of course. I mentioned Science and Math Career Days. The Jean Arethuzig Memorial Portrait was unveiled in a, in a very nice ceremony on June seventh. Family and friends of Jean gathered in the World Language Alt code for the unveiling of her portrait, which was done by George Hansen, who's a staff member here. There's a picture of a picture there, if you can see that. It's our superintendent on the left, but the picture you can see through by George Hansen. It's obviously on display and commemorating Jean's many years of great service to our school in the World Language Department and beyond. Global Issues Awareness Week, I know you'll have time after this meeting to look at some of the posters over here, but I'm just showing you where they are.
Flashlights, Tom?
Flashlights will be provided, minors' helmets if we need it. But this is part of the incredible event that takes place in the aftermath of AP testing, at least for the four sections of world history. Mr. Utaro, Nate Utaro, has his students pick a topic or a, a need that's worldwide, and it might be nutrition, it might be water, it might be electricity or energy, that sort of thing. They're free to choose that topic, and they're free to pick their partners to work with on that, and sometimes several partners. But it was a fabulous night, because it was the first time they ever kind of opened it up to the public, and the public, in this case, are going to be the doting mothers and fathers and, and family of all these students, and they were here in, in high numbers. So it was a great event right here in this library, right in this general area here. So kudos for the, the kids that participated in that, and also Mr. Utaro. NEF Silent Auction, she's gone now to her beauty rest, but Spisha Geiges was front and center as the culinary teacher at our school for the North Row Ed Foundation Silent Auction. We had a family that won that, and they came, two young boys, ran around with their transformer trucks and entertained themselves during hors d'oeuvres, but it was a fabulous night. The food was marvelous, the students were incredible in terms of cooking and serving and accommodating the, the family, and so that was wonderful. We did another silent auction, which was to participate with, by offering a parking space close into the school and prime seats for the graduation ceremony. So it was fun to do those two things and to, of course, help out the Ed Foundation with their auction. Moving along crisply now, the Serenity Garden Eagle Project, there's a picture of an Eagle Scout, some wave off the street. That actually is a picture of two different Boy Scout Eagle projects there. The flooring of that whole thing is a brick circular design, and then this year, James Rizzatano, Jay Rizzatano, for his Eagle project constructed six benches and flowerpots to go with them. So it's rather nice, and it will afford a chance for a class from time to time to take a little break and head outside. A lot going on with the Art Honor Society, but let me cut to the chase with a few things here. We have the last team standing. By June tenth, there was only one team left, and that was our girls rugby team, and they met, as Kara said, at Endicott College in the title match. They went up against Belmont High School, and they've played Belmont before. I had a conversation that was unrelated to this completely with the principal at Belmont High School this week, and I, I mentioned to him at the end of the conversation, congratulations to his girls' team for winning. And he said, the most amazing part of that whole thing was going to the breakfast the day before, and being with those two teams and observing them in terms of their high regard for each other, how they got along so well together, their sportsmanship and their, and their friendship. And I talked to the coach about that, Emily Philbin, and she said, yeah, she's, she puts out the word to her players and says, you know, you're going to go beat each other's brains in? Well, maybe not. But, you know, beat each other up on the field of play, but you're going to find that their strongest friendships are forged just there. And that's certainly true, and he was so complimentary of our, of our girls and how they interacted with his, his team too. So that was a nice thing to hear. And farewell to the class of 2017. Thank you very much. That's my important.
That's his comment.
Yeah.
And just when his color photos were extraordinary, talking about that earlier.
I know. That's a very symbolic picture, just the backsides of these buses going off into the sunset. Thank you very much. I'm sure it was the last we heard from you tonight. Approval of grants, approval of grants and donations, bows and boosters.
So I vote that, I move that we vote to accept the, the bows donation of $20,000 worth of speakers and the boosters donation of $18,000 for support of financial, you know, tasks that go, that go with deploying them.
Okay.
Do we need to do the 3,000 too, and no, just the, just the grants?
That's second.
That's second. Okay, Paul, moved by Paul Buck, or seconded by Lynn. Any questions or discussion? Paul?
I mean, bows have been terrific to us, just terrific.
Unbelievable.
Should go on record.
And we thank them very, very much. And we thank boosters very, very much. And we thank the Regional School Committee Budget.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor? All those in favor?
Oh, sorry. Can I ask a question? So, are these both speakers, like, the whole booster thing, is this for the field or is this for the auditorium?
Stadium field.
It is, okay. Sorry, I'm just like, I'm reading this out.
That's all right. Okay, now all those in favor? Yeah, okay, that passes unanimously. Excellent, thank you very much, bows and boosters. FY17 Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report. Paul.
I move that we accept the Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report dated May 31, 2017, until audibly.
Second. Move by Paul, seconded by Lynn. Any questions or discussions? All right, all those in favor? That passes unanimously. FY17 Revenue Report. Paul.
I move that we accept the Northborough-Southborough Regional School District Statement of Revenue dated May 31, 2017, uh, until audibly. Yes, until audibly.
Second, moved by Paul, seconded by Lynn. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? That passes unanimously. Enrollments.
Information on the enrollments are in your packet, Tom. I wonder if you've got a comment about this, but we, uh, are seeing an influx of freshmen. It's early yet, so we don't know what our final numbers will be. But we do know, uh, from guidance, uh, 100% of the Northborough, uh, grade eight right now are enrolled, and almost 90% of Southborough.
Good.
So, uh, things could shift dramatically, as we all know, between now and, uh, in terms of enrollment numbers. So, um, Tom, what was it, 25 students, six already enrolled?
Yes.
That we weren't expecting.
Right.
We put in a, a fence in, in the borders of Northborough and Southborough for freshman students.
And I think the, um, guidance reported a lot from private school, deciding to come for good reasons to Algonquin.
Yeah, there's, there's multiple, um, um, factors that are involved in this, uh, higher than, than normal amount, but I think, all told, it, it reflects our, our stance in terms of marketing the school. We think that, um, our school is very competitive, and, um, we're communicating that more broadly and, and deeply into the community with good results. And one thing that we did change recently, a couple years ago, we flipped around and, uh, we're, we're having our students from the middle schools come to Algonquin and to walk through the school when it's busy, when it, when things are happening, uh, so that they can see that, and they can experience, you know, what it looks like when it's live and, uh, operating. So, I think that's had a profound impact on, on a lot of our students. So, that's a good thing. We certainly have the room, um, for, for a, a large class, and so we're, we're looking forward to this.
Joan. And I think another positive thing with, because I know that, that's always a great celebrated thing when the high school kids go down to eighth grade, but like in your Principal's Report, I saw here that there were five ARHS EL students who went down to C-school. So, and I, I know that's happened before throughout the year, so, I mean, those kids look up at those kids and go, "Oh, I want to be like them someday," and they're, they're very impressed and admire them, so that even helps when you, not even eighth grade, when you go down to the K-12 schools. So, thank you very much.
Exactly, thank you.
Another foot in your hat.
Okay, any other comments on enrollments? Then, moving on to old business, naming Subcommittee update.
Paul did, uh, Tom did a wonderful job summarizing a very special day, uh, that we had, unveiling the portrait that George Hansen sewed carefully, crafted for, uh, in memory of Jean. Uh, there's a, a few photos in your, um, packet. There's a copy of the, um, the actual dedication, um, the actual naming, uh, for the World Language Resource, um, area, and then a snapshot of the family, and it was wonderful to have so many family members present. And, um, want to give a shout out to Aaron Shreve, who is a junior, who played, um, and serenaded us, uh, throughout the process, um, for, I think, three hours, um, two hours anyways, through the ceremony, just played his guitar, it was wonderful, musical music, and volunteered his time to do that. So, it was a, a great afternoon and a really, uh, celebratory culmination of a multi-year process to make this happen. So, thank you, Tom, and, and the naming committees, for sure. And the parents send their appreciation to the committee and to the naming committee for all of their work in remembering, helping to remember Jean. And, uh, just, uh, we, I think we alluded to this, but we also had a wonderful Mass Ball and Heroes event here at the high school, and the Arsenal family attended. Lindsay, um, is, is quite a powerful speaker, uh, not only for what Memorial Day, my, Day is really about, but also to, um, thoughtfully remember her brother. And we had an opportunity at that point, while not the full ceremony, but to, uh, introduce attendees to Brian Austin Altway, which will be, um, named in a, at another time in, uh, another ceremony, probably in the fall. So, it was just a great, a great ceremony. Kathy, you with there?
Nice, yeah. And the hockey team was there with their, um, Camel shirts on.
Right.
It was nice.
Very nice.
Very nice.
Done? Okay, uh, Policy Development and Distribution, none. Audience Sharing.
None. Action minutes.
Oh, we should go back to add.
Should we move on to the minutes? Should we approve minutes first?
You know, can I move that we move the action on the minutes till next meeting? Do, do we need them? Do we need them?
Tell Cheryl. That's okay. No, that's fine.
I know, but.
No, no, Cheryl.
But does she have to reprint all that paper again?
We'll just bring them back. You don't know that we were trying to get them done at the end of the year, so we didn't have to revisit one year again in the next.
Paul can do it in one motion.
Can we just? We'll do it in one motion. Okay, let's move that to now.
At least in all the executive session, so it doesn't matter, there's nothing that's being picked up. I reviewed them also.
So, if you'd like me to, we'll head up to there. So, I, I move that we vote to, um, accept the open meeting minutes of May 17th, 2017, that we ex- approve and release the executive session minutes of May 17th, 2017, that we vote to release the retained executive session minutes, and we vote to approve and release the Subcommittee Minutes that are all attached in your packets.
Second. Move by Paul, seconded by so many people. Seconded by Lynn. Any discussion? All those in favor? That passes unanimously. All right, I thought we were going to the other question. So, uh, I'm gonna move Audience Sharing to the end. So, Personnel, Distribution of Personnel Report, in your packet. Communications, Distribution of the Harbinger, in your packet. Approval of Bills and Payrolls, always. Agenda items for next year.
Right.
Anybody have any suggestions?
Yeah, committee assignments, right?
Right, committee assignments.
Uh, freshman orientation.
Okay, freshman orientation.
The, uh, search for Assistant Principals and IT Directors.
Yeah.
How they, would they be combined? How the, um, summer program in Special Ed was?
Summer programming.
Maybe it's a change.
So, update. Nope, that'll be at combine. Come in a second, we'll have to combine.
Okay, so, then, let's go to Audience Sharing.
All right. Kelly?
We're also audience members.
So, Tom? We do have a special presentation, uh, in recognition of, you know, if they would stop retiring, we'd be all fine, we'd be out of here by now, but we're not, and neither is Mr. Mead. And so, we do have a special, um, certificate of recognition from our very own House of Representatives. And, um, you and Joan?
You can.
You're in good company.
So, this is a, um, normally carried by the Congress and represents, uh, the whole legislature, but apparently it's a busy time of year, and she wouldn't be here at 11 o'clock at night anyway. But it says, "The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers sincere congratulations to Thomas Mead in recognition of your dedicated service to the towns of Northborough and, Southborough and Northborough as Principal of the Algonquin Regional High School. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given this 21st day of June 2017, and signed by Robert DeLeo, Speaker of the House, and authored by Caroline Dykema, State Representative. And I will shake your hand in her place."
Thank you so much, Kathleen.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Very nice.
Any other audience sharing?
Is there any other, I mean, I'll share of, um, although it's so much better to share after you've had your cupcake in your hand. But, um, just thank you, Mr. Mead, for, I mean, I have never known another Principal of the high school, so you are Algonquin Regional High School to me. And, um, instead of going through, you know, a long farewell speech, I will just say that I think the, um, I think what says it all is, all anybody has to do is look at your face when you talk about the kids. When you talk about their, you know, accomplishments, and, you know, even just their walk in the halls. It, that is the testament to what, um, you have brought to Algonquin, what the kids feel and, you know, have felt ever since you, ever since you arrived, what we have all acknowledged. And, um, thank you very much for bringing that to Algonquin, and bringing Algonquin to the wonderful place that it is right now.
Thank you, Kathleen, I, I really appreciate, um, that. It's, um, it's been a, a very, very gratifying experience for me, um, and a highlight of, of my career in education, so I, uh, I am endlessly thankful to the towns of Northborough and Southborough, um, the parents who send their wonderful children to our school, and, you know, my staff and, and teachers who do such a wonderful job of, of helping them to grow and mature.
Actually, um, uh, you were, my son was a senior when you were your first year, and it was just noticeably different, like, the kids, and I was at that first graduation, and I'd never seen a graduating class give a Principal a standing ovation. And you just, like, walked the halls and just, and, you know, the school spirit, um, prior to you coming was, I don't know, I mean, it, it was just, it, it, the kids were kind of in the transition from the new school opening and, and, um, the construction completing, and, and that senior class had lived a little bit, um, through some of the construction and the closures and things like that. So, there was a lot of different theories of why the school spirit wasn't, you know, what my son expected it would be, and it really has, has changed, and I, I, it, it has to do with your leadership, you know, your, your personality is so upbeat and attending every single, you know, event, um, that the kids, well.
Happened to everyone.
I mean, you set the standard, I think the first year, you definitely were at everyone's. But, um, you, the, you, people just assumed that you were there, so don't give up the secret, everyone thinks you were there, so.
He just passed out blue blazes to everybody.
Yeah, yeah, after a while. But you definitely were there and a presence in the kids' lives and showed a great interest in, you know, what they were doing, you know, outside of the classroom as well as in the school, you know, outside of school as well as in the school, so, um, and I think that you've set the stage ready for the, for, um, our new Principal, and she's, you know, she's got a great, um, situation that she's walking in with, and, um, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, Lynn.
I'd like to say that I agree with Lynn. I think the atmosphere and the climate of this community has changed dramatically since you took the leadership. And for that, you will be, you have left your mark, and you'll never be forgotten here in the halls of Algonquin, mainly from even the teachers that you hired. You had, you saw the positives, and you saw what they were gonna do and the type of leaders they would be, and you selected great people, so your legacy will live through them. I had the honor of graduation of meeting your wife, very lovely lady, of course, what would we expect? And I, I was happy to hear that, you know, after your next couple weeks, you're gonna be taking a bicycling tour through Europe, is that correct?
That's right, that's right, yeah.
And you're, yeah, so we will expect to see you, uh, at the Tour de France. Hope you can make it up those, uh, the Alps. You know, it, it's wonderful, and your wife was just very charming, and she's so proud of you as we are, so you will be sorely missed, but you've left your mark. You're always here, thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
So, I'll just, I'll keep it short and sweet. Thank you so much for all of your service, and, uh, and I hope that you enjoy your retirement and come back and visit. Your presence is noticed a lot. I notice your presence a lot, you know, like she says, not just in classrooms, but, you know, outside of the classrooms, whether it be the kids' activities or sports, whatever. So, it's nice to see.
Thank you, Kathy.
Yeah, and just, you know, piling on here, I mean, you've been just terrific, you've been a delight to work with. Uh, it's, it's noticeable in the, in the department chairs when they make their presentations, and, you know, I, I go back far enough that, you know, I, um, like Joan, I can kind of attest to the fact that, you know, it's, it's terrific, and, you know, that's, that all started when you arrived. Congrats on that, you've built a terrific engine out there, it's working, firing on all cylinders. Nice job, nice job. Enjoy your retirement, is right.
Thank you.
Enjoy.
Thank you.
Now I want to retire.
No recognition of the work that you've done would be quite complete, Mr. Mead, without cupcakes. Can you adjourn?
I move, uh, adjourn, this leaving of, uh, Algonquin, no person moving this way.
Move by Paul Buck, seconded by Lynn. All those in favor? Unanimously.
Have a great summer, everybody.